And if you would remain standing Pastor Tim Craft will lead us in prayer.
Good morning Lord, thank you for another gorgeous day that you're laying out for us. Thank you for this great country and thank you for the freedom that we have to be able to hold these meetings. We need your wisdom and your guidance and I pray Father that you will bless all that are here, our commissioners and those who come bringing their issues and needs. Father you've elected these commissioners through the people of the county. You know them, their needs, their motives, their hopes and their fears. And I ask Lord that you give them strength and speak to them to give them wisdom greater than their own. May they hear you and act accordingly. And may we all remember that you're concerned about what is said and done here today. So now Lord we ask for your blessing on this meeting that you would guide it, direct it so that it is full of wisdom, solutions, productivity and respect for one another and we humbly ask these things in your name, amen.
Yes, thank you so much Commissioners Carla Nichols, the Director of Public Health. I bring today Ms. Kathy Winger. Kathy has been with us for 37 years in the Health Department. So I am humbled and honored to present Kathy in her retirement. So although her title has changed over the years Kathy has held the same position throughout her 37 years with the county. Kathy has seen many updates within the Health Department, both in the programs that are offered and our physical space. When she started, the Health Department was located in half of our current building and then in the basement of the courthouse. Working in the Health Department over the years Kathy has been able to assist with the Health Department's preparedness response with the Greensburg tornado, the hepatitis A outbreak, our H1N1 response efforts, working with a small PACS emergency response plan after 9/11 and assisting with the COVID-19 response and vaccine clinics. Kathy has worked under four directors and has met many great people, both in the Health Department and as part of other departments throughout the county. Kathy has been married to Richard for almost 27 years. They have four children and 13 grandchildren ranging in age from age one to 17. She looks forward to retiring and spending many more times and much time with the grandchildren. Kathy is active member of the Crosspoint Church and serves monthly on their serve team. You're invited to a retirement reception in honoring Kathy next Wednesday, which is the 19th, from 2:00 to 4:00 in the Veterans Room here at the courthouse. So I present to you Ms. Kathy Winger.
Do you wish to make any comments before we present you with the plaque?
No, not really.
Our next item on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda today. We'd ask that you come to the podium and if there are comments, come to the podium, give your name for the record and try to hold your comments to less than five minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to make public comments on items not on the agenda?
I'm Jerry Bishop and I'm here to speak on a problem that I'm having with my township as far as a tree row. Is that what you're asking?
I would say that would fit in this category.
Okay, sorry, this is all new to me.
You're fine. I don't know that we have any jurisdiction there, but you're welcome to speak.
Well, I come to you guys because I've been getting the runaround from the township. The trustee has yet to come visit me over what they're doing to my property, tearing my tree line out. I feel like I've been treated very badly by the township. It's been a lot of lies and deception. They basically just show up and start ripping my tree line and my fence out of my property. I've lived at my property for 25 years. All that's been there a lot longer than that. And I'm trying to look for help. So that's why I'm here to see if you guys can point me in the right direction on what I need to do. Because even to the point where the trustee, I finally was able to talk to Don Britton, I believe. And anyways, he finally gave me the number after getting the runaround and runaround, trying to get ahold of the trustee. And I got ahold of him finally and he told me that he would come visit with me the next day after lunch. So I waited around my place, nothing. Next thing you know it turns into a week, then we have the snowstorms and stuff. And then I was busy doing snow removal. He, I talked to Steve Thufford, which is second in line. He said he'd try again to get him to get ahold of me, never did. Well, so this has all started in the January, February's when this happened. Nobody's gave me an explanation why this needs to happen. I've offered to help, I've offered to, I'll trim the trees for them to save money for the taxpayers and just convenience for all of us to make us all happy. And then just to give you an instance how bad this is, how mistreated I feel as a person in my township, which I try to help people and you know, be a part of the community for the good. The county came out, on 95th is where I live, a week ago and they were doing their trees, which they started a couple of miles down the road. And I saw what they're doing, perfectly acceptable what they're doing, they're doing what they're supposed to. It was about lunchtime, they pull over to the side of my road, which is 95th and Holset, and set their vehicles off. Well, if you live in the country, you know when it's calm out, you can hear voices for a long ways. Next thing I hear, and you'll excuse me, this is loud, but I hear one of the employees, or not employees, but the county guys, tell another one, hey, the township guy just came by here and said this guy's a real dickhead. You know, he's never even met me in person. I talked to him on the phone one time, I was polite with him. And I've got nothing but you know, just the runaround on this deal. He was there that day, had time to talk bad about me to people that don't even know me. But he couldn't even pull in my driveway like he was supposed to do a week and a half, two weeks before to come discuss what was going on with my property. So I feel very attacked as a citizen of Reno County and I'm looking for help. So I'm kind of asking if you guys, which actually Ron lives down the road from me and he was very professional and nice and took the time to come down and see, which he told me that he didn't know that you guys had the authority to do anything. But I figured, he said maybe it'd be good to address you guys to note the situation that I'm having and if you could lead me in the right direction on what I need to do.
Well, I'm kind of where Ron is, or was. I don't know that we have the authority. We do have a gentleman here specializing in governmental law.
I feel like this is my question for me. So Kansas, there are two systems of road systems in Kansas. The county unit system where the county controls all the roads and the township system.
Right.
Reno has the township system and we, and in that system, the township trustees are independently elected and we really don't have any control or jurisdiction to tell them what to do. A lot of people kind of assume that as a bigger form of government that does a lot of roads, that we would somehow be over the townships, but we're just not. We get questions from them and try and point them in the right direction, but we don't have any authority to say, hey, this is how you should do your job.
Okay.
They should have a meeting and you should try and address them at a meeting of the Township Board.
Right, okay. Yeah, which I'm trying to stop. So they only went so far. I got them to stop for now. The plan was they were going to stop until the trustee came and talked to me and we could go over what was going on or whatever, which has been two, two and a half weeks now, you know. And they won't call me back. I've even called the county attorney, which I don't know what was up with that. I've called several times, no one answered and I've left messages, no one will return my call there. So that's kind of why I'm here, just to kind of see what I can do, you know.
Would that be in his jurisdiction too? I know I've gone when I was very young with my dad and there's some things they just don't handle. They have county attorney, but they handle other things. I don't know, I'm just a old farmer, but I have at points in my life decided I needed help from an attorney.
Right.
And a phone call to the right guy might get you more good than we can do.
Okay, okay.
Because like Patrick says, it's just not in our jurisdiction.
Okay, okay.
I think the biggest problem here is, I mean, we've got a, I've personally seen and I've talked to everybody, but the,
Trustee.
Russ Robinson?
Yes.
Yeah, I have nothing to talk to you about. I talked to Steve, I talked to the workers, I talked to Randy. Seems to be a place where there's come to no compromise here. I realize the county has to do a few things, so the corner and the stop sign's visible. Last I heard, it's to the point that they got that at some point, but you know, they told me they're going on, period. They're not stopping where they're stopping. They've got a plan to go back to, what, a quarter mile?
Yeah.
And that's what they're, that's what they totally intend to do. I, I was kind of hoping we could get some common ground here, but I don't, on the township side, they're on the right of way.
The trees?
The trees that they took down is on the right of way. They did not do a very good job. It's pretty bad. They can't remove the stumps because they're just right on top of a gas line and telephone lines. So to remove the stumps would be, would mean removing the utility lines. I, I, the township's got a lot to do. I haven't quite figured out why this intersection is so important to them, but they did tell me that that is one of their busiest intersections. Whether it is or not, I don't know. It's, I don't know where to be any different than Lorraine or, of course down the back of the road, there's not much there anymore, it beats the highway. But I do live in the area and I travel a lot. I, again, I guess we're telling Mr. Bishop here that his only avenue of relief is to hire an attorney.
That would be a good option for him. I mean, doing what I do, township resident disputes happen periodically and I've seen the township being the wrong and I've seen the resident being the wrong and I don't know what the situation is here. But it's going to be between them. Another thing that always comes to mind is, you know, when you see the township election results every year, it's usually somebody, a write-in candidate or someone getting 20 votes. And you know, people can always, I always offer people the opportunity to run for township trustee.
I've honestly been tossing that around, you know, like I'm new to all this. So like, I don't want to try to jump into something that I'm not, you know, I want to be able to provide the service that he's provided, you know, so I'm looking into it, but yes, definitely.
I mean, when the township's calls me on something like this, I give them the same advice to maybe hire your own counsel to make sure you have an attorney that represents the township, but we're just kind of, we're not any different than anyone else who's just a witness to it.
But at this point, you're telling us that the commission has no say or no?
Yeah, we really don't have the ability to do anything.
To do that.
Okay.
I sympathize with you, Ms. Bishop, but we're just, we just can't help you.
Okay, okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for coming.
Alright, thanks.
Any other comments for?
My name is Karen Drake. I live at 1906 East Trail West Road. And first of all, thank you guys for what you do. It's appreciated by a lot of people. What I want to talk about mainly, I think Mr. Hurst is towards you, is just to get information on what is happening in our area with the Everji plant and the 96 corridor. I've talked to a lot of the neighbors and it's like these things pop out, we don't have any information about it and it's already a done deal. So we're just looking for information on what's going in our community. And I was wondering, is that, do I talk to you about that or who do I talk to about it?
I would suggest if you want more information, you talk with the, oops, excuse me, I forget that all the time. I would suggest if you want further information, you visit with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so after the fact, after the 37 years with the county, The chamber? Okay, so um, after the fact, after this is all, you know, said and done, there, and we realize there's nothing that we can do about it, but how do we find out maybe what is happening in our area prior to uh, them buying land, knowing that this is what we want to put in, an Evergy plant? I did go to the Zoom meeting. I did pa- participate in that.
You can call basically any one of us on the commission.
Okay, uh, so is there anything else happening in our community?
Well, you know, there's lots of minor things happening. You know, we've got a water line that's gonna go down to Yoder and Habit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've got a new sewer system in that process of designing for Habit and Yoder.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, outside of that, uh, gonna be a lot of corn and wheat planted and sort of, I mean, milo planted, but.
Just need the rain for it.
No, I do not know of of anything else.
Okay.
But you can't tell what might come up, but if you would be sure and follow the social media points, like the Reno County website, Reno County Facebook.
I don't Facebook.
There's some, there's some information on that. We keep it, Pretty Sander keeps it really up to date with regards to the website.
Okay.
And there are some instances where it's a pretty big project and until we know more about it, we won't be able to uh, relay that information because it's proprietary. And and as soon as we're able to, we'll let people know. But uh, as far as that facility is concerned down there, uh, it will be, from what I know about it, and I think anybody else chimes in, it's gonna be a really, really good program. Uh, because as you know, with uh, the electricity needs here, and and not just when the wind blows or when the sun's out, we need, we need some type of steady supply of electricity to keep our lights on. Yours and mine both.
And I agree a hundred percent with you there, but it's the things that, I guess, that concern us as a community that doesn't concern you is the light pollution, the noise, the air pollution, if any. You know, all these questions that we have, and at this Zoom meeting, they wouldn't allow questions. They only wanted comments. Well.
Yeah, I I think that you will find that the people that are doing this project, as well as the ones that are looking after the area, will be a concerted effort. I know everyone looks at no waste. Uh, the one good thing about this is the fact that it's gonna be air-cooled and not water-cooled. So we don't lose that asset that we have in water to recycle. But those are all looked into with regards to the livability nearby.
Okay, and I I get that and I understand that, but it would have been nice to know in our community, this is what is coming in. Or, you know, as farmers sell their grounds, and and it's totally up to them if they want to sell or not. We we can't, you know, we don't say anything about that. It's just that we don't have an idea that this is coming into our community. And I, and you say people that look after the community, well, it's it's after the fact. It's not.
The things you're concerned with, though, are taken into consideration when that project goes. I know that's not an answer for you, but.
It's not.
But nonetheless, I I don't, I don't know how to tell you more myself. Maybe someone else can help.
Well, I've got a comment, and I think this has been before us before, but the bottom line is, I probably found out about it, the electric plant. Uh, I got a text message, there would be an announcement, and I got it two days before, and that's kind of the first I knew about it too. That wasn't a county project. Both both things you're concerned with were city projects. And they held hearings and public hearings where you could have commented, and they had to to, and and it's just a matter of when public hearings are 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 held, a lot of times, even in our public hearings that we have to hold, sometimes there's a lot of people, sometimes there's nobody there. Uh, it's it's a matter of knowing who's doing what. And I'll admit, I didn't know any sooner than anybody else because we didn't handle those projects. And uh, and had we known anything about them, we would have had a, had to sign documents that we wouldn't say anything about it, proprietary proprietary information. Uh, I personally, in a couple of these items, chose not to know anything. So I darn sure wouldn't say anything wrong and and uh, could be sued and lose what I've worked a lifetime for.
Right.
This position isn't about me losing what I've worked. So I didn't know any more than you did, by choice. But it wasn't handled through here, so I didn't have to know.
Gotcha.
Karen, some of these things are, now that I will use proprietary, we sign a non-disclosure agreement sometimes. And and a little bit of that went on, I think, here to not disclose some. They were making land deals, that kind of stuff, see its security, see whether they could even do it. Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of these projects behind the scene get developed for a year or two trying to do it or, you know, and if you give it away, you might give it away to another community where we could benefit from it. So they'd be real careful about how they do that. And I'll admit, probably I was in on this a little sooner than maybe some of them was hearing it at some meetings at the chamber. But it was far enough out from worrying about whether it's gonna come or not come until he made the announcement. And I didn't honestly, I would say, what these guys didn't know until the final announcement was made that whether, you know, to say something about us coming here, whether it'd be solidified. But I will say this, county does have a hand in this because we okay whether they get an island annex, that piece of ground out there. And I don't think it would behoove us to say no uh, to this kind of a project because this is gonna have a huge valuation for the county and it'd be real beneficial for us all if we have a, Mr. Parting can speak to that as well, that it 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 could make an impact on your taxes and mine. And we certainly need these kind of things. We're one or two in the state that got chosen for this. And, you know, it's gonna have a good local economic impact with all the contractors running around for, they've said four years. We hope it's sooner than that, but they estimated that in the long end of it, so just in case. But so that is kind of why sometimes they're not published until they're published the way they are, that you feels like after the fact. And I have signed a non-deposure for stuff before that I maybe wished I hadn't of, and, you know, you do that. So it's like Don said, you can't say certain things or you, you know, you're being, could be in some pretty serious trouble. It seems to me, though, I'll just speak, that a lot of times this stuff gets leaked out somewhere, and so people know about it. I have no idea where that comes from. But it's, I can guarantee you, if we signed something, it didn't come from this board, but so I I feel you, but I mean, it is one of those things that that happens and.
Is it a common practice to annex a piece like the ni- uh, out there at the ninety six corridor? And also rezone it at the same time without notifying um, neighbors that, but up to that land, that this is what's going on?
It's common to rezone things when you add and annex them into a city, and I don't know what they did for notification.
They didn't.
I I don't know because I'm, that was a city project. I don't know if they, but it is pretty common when you annex land in to do a rezone at the same time, I'd say. While I have the microphone, the only thing I was gonna add is, yeah, um, Evergy didn't really, wasn't really a thing the county was really involved in. We have done some of these non-disclosure arrangements in the past. It always kind of gives me heartburn because there's, it puts the elected in a bit of a bind, and we try and be real selective and careful. I don't believe we have anything currently ongoing that would be subject to an NDA. And response to your question, whether or not we have something going on, and if I, if we knew, when it, when, for every dozen of those things that get talked about, um, maybe one comes to fruition. So it's a lot of, if we talked about everything that might happen, you know, we'd spend, we could spend all morning talking about things that might happen.
Sure.
A a point I want to make that just came up, this board had one vote in that whole deal. And it hinged on whether their annexation would stop a city from being able to expand. That's the one vote we had. City of South Hutch was for the, to my knowledge, was for it. City of Hutch was for it. The only vote we gets, whether it's gonna impair them. They had decided it wasn't. So that's the one question. Will it impair them, impair them from expanding or not? They could expand two different ways, down to that present location. Uh, how can you vote no? I I or, you know, you you you've got to vote yes. It it's not gonna impair them. I mean, it's physically there. How could you vote any other way and and actually justify your vote? And that's the one vote we had in, as a county and as a board, that we had in that whole situation.
Well, that was one more vote than my community. And so this affects my community in the not knowing, I think, and you being a farmer, I would think you would understand just a little bit.
Oh, I understand. I've been on receiving and often enough.
I'm sorry that you have. I mean, it it's just, I think it's the point that I'd like to make, and I hope that will change, is to let us know what's going on so that we can be prep- better prepared. How's this gonna affect my property taxes? I mean, nobody's gonna want to move in with a industrial park right down the road and traffic that is constant, going both ways, north and southeast and west. So as my prac- pri- um, property taxes soar, you know, how how, there's just a lot of of questions that we as a community have, and it would be appreciated, um, maybe if we could kept, be kept more informed, um, what's going on?
I would suggest, as close as you are to the cities, I would watch their.
Okay.
Their agendas.
Okay.
And their stuff as much as you watch Reno County's, because we had no authority here.
Okay.
The one vote I told you we we were allowed to make was obvious that there's only one way you could vote.
Right.
And and that's all I can say about the matter. I I I personally know how it feels. I've been there. And uh.
I I think that if there's any big projects that come about out in the county, that we, this com- this commission has been very good about coming out and having a an open meeting so that those things can be discussed. I think you you find that. We were down at Yoder here not long ago.
I called that meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that's the way, that's really good. That's how we know things, you know, also. And uh, there isn't, I don't know of a cost-efficient method that we we don't already have, that we don't already have.
Sure.
And so, uh, we have to keep on up on things and see what's happening and uh, just keep at it and see see little things and 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 give a call.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the information that you gave me.
Well, thank you. Uh, I know we've spent more than five minutes on each one of these things, but uh, that's at our discretion. If you, I'd say if there's no other comments on other items, let's move on to item five. Determine additions or revisions to the agenda. You guys have anything over there? How about any of you here? If if not, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion before we vote? Seeing none? Send you if you would.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Uh, that brings us to business items. What?
Consent agenda.
That's what we just did. So.
Didn't we just do the additions?
No, no, seeing none. We made the move to accept as presented. Okay, uh, business items under seven A.
I do think, I think there might be confusion. I think the motion was to approve the agenda, not to approve the consent. I don't know. Maybe we should have a discussion about consent next and make sure no one wants to remove anything. I thought they were, I thought you were voting on the agenda as presented, so I was confused too. I don't know if any of the commissioners were.
I heard Ron going.
Are you sure? Or?
Yeah, just for clarity, can we do the, do the consent agenda, just to make sure?
Okay, for clarity and make sure we, if it's all right with it, everybody. Let the minutes show that we agreed not to change, and then let's have a motion. I'll entertain a motion to accept as written. Is that what we're after?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, guys? We got a motion and a second. Seeing none, send you if you would.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes. Uh, and thank you, guys. We want it to be right. If there's a question, please slow me up. Better to do it now than find out later. Uh.
I don't always hear right.
We're all in the same boat. If if there's a question, we need to take care of it. Uh, under business items, we'll take up the business items now, and under seven A, we have a morand- memorandum of understanding with Prairie Dunes uh, on this golf tournament for Senior Open in twenty nine. Uh, Randy, you have any comments from staff?
Sure. So this topic is to, um, staff's recommending this letter of support and the contribution of a hundred thousand dollars for the United States Golf Association Tournament that will take place in twenty twenty nine. Um, Reno County gave the same amount in two thousand six. Prairie Dunes is asking for the same amount from two thousand six. Um, some background, when, in two thousand and six, when Reno County contributed a hundred thousand that month, the month of the actual tournament, our sales tax receipts went up about fifty, a little over fifty thousand dollars for that one month. That, and I compared the year before and the year after to get that, that one month when the USGA was here, the sales tax. So the county return on investment direct gets half of it back, or got half of it back in two thousand six. Um, the contribution is kind of as the county has done on other projects with businesses, kind of supports, grants, kind of to help, to show local support for the events. So, um, we would get a portion of this back and probably have the opportunity, hopefully, to get Reno County's name out there at the, at Prairie Dunes, at the golf course, in front of thousands of people to hopefully promote the community, Reno County community. And the city and county had a joint meeting in two, in January to discuss this, and there were some questions. And then, um, it was on the agenda for last meeting that was tabled because there were a couple of questions. So this is being brought back, and I just wanted to kind of give you the quick overview. I had asked a couple of the members, Alan Fee and Brad Pryor, you know, to be here in case there's questions, but this is really. case of questions, but this is really just a, you know, you guys tabled it from the last meeting, but it would come out of economic development reserve funds that we do have over a million dollars in that fund. This would be earmarked and paid out probably between now and 2029, middle of 2029. It wouldn't all come at once.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to visit with Mr. Fee for a second if I could have him. You got any comments you'd like to make prior to?
Alan Fee. Spent my whole life in Reno County. I'm here with LeAnn Cox, C V B. LeAnn and I worked in oh six together and have worked together on a lot of things. Does an awesome job. Brad Pryor's also with me. Brad, Brad Pryor is going to be co-chairing the, uh, the championship. When I was asked by the board to, to help out again, since I did it in oh six, I, I wanted to recruit a couple of younger folks that, uh, we could create some type of succession as these things come further. So understand, we were together February fourth at the joint meeting, uh, had a presentation then. Uh, I negotiated the contract back in oh six and certainly this one in 29. So happy to give you any information from before or any questions that you have now. Get you whatever you'd like to, in order to make a good decision.
I mean, I think it's a great thing to bring it into the community. I appreciate you guys' effort to go ahead and do this again. I know it's a whole lot of work and certainly from listening to you speak here a while back and, and knowing people that work that, it just, I'm sure it's a tremendous strain to do that to begin with. And, and although I agree that it'll give the community some great exposure, I mean, we're working on several other avenues, as Randy knows, that, uh, that we've spent a fair amount of money trying to promote Reno County in certain ways as well. So I don't think it's all about promoting Reno County, but it's certainly a good thing to have here. And I, I think the lady that's in the audience there, we spoke the last meeting and, and we, I kind of wanted to see a breakdown of what was paid back. And obviously we didn't recoup our funds, but there is certain value in, in promoting and, and certainly doing that and helping. She spoke to the fact that Saline County and some other counties even ended up with money, which I have very little interest in because that doesn't help Reno County.
However, we do. Have enough hotel rooms, so the hotels have to spill over into other counties.
They do, I get that. And we do have a new one here that's going to help some, but a lot of times we don't have a lot of people. Some of the, in the history, we haven't had great motels and some of them kind of come around, we've built some since then. But my big question for you is, is this USGA, what do they walk away and help you with? Do they, do they give you any money before they leave?
We give them money.
You give them money too?
So, so I'm not sure. They get a cut of ticket sales and they get a cut of corporate hospitality. All the TV, everything else goes to the USGA. They, they, they hold the championship here. We get nothing from the USGA, nothing. There's, there's no dollars exchanged from the USGA. None, none events that they do. They don't do an event where they pay any, anything for, uh, and, and, and the only thing I would add too, as you think about this, and you guys, you need to do what's best for the county for sure. The club will be shut down for three weeks in July. When kids use the pool, when people play tennis, when I like to play golf, when a lot of our national membership, which has grown a lot, likes to come in and use the club. It's closed. We got to continue to pay our folks because they're all going to be working at this thing. Most of the members are going to be affected by not being able to use their club and many of the members like myself and Brad are going to be volunteering hundreds of hours and also asked to put money into this thing as well from a hospitality event. So it, it's, it's, uh, it's a good thing that they're allowing the USGA to use, uh, the golf course and the grounds and everything else, but there is no money exchanged from the USGA.
Well, I had heard from somebody that worked there that there was.
Heard from somebody that worked where?
That worked at the Dunes. I won't disclose who it was.
Were they involved in the championship or do they have any involvement at all in the championship?
Yes, they did.
I would, I would, I would like to have that conversation with you outside of here then because I'd like, I'd like to correct whoever is providing information.
There was some money left from that organization. That's why I wanted to ask that this morning, so.
Show you the budget.
Okay. Well, if you're that open, I understand.
I'm that open.
It may have been a misunderstanding and that's why I wanted to question.
Disappointing that there would be that kind of misunderstanding from people that don't know what, what goes on.
Happens.
Shouldn't.
Shouldn't, but it does.
I, I've talked to several people and because that's my district. And, um, first off, the, no, there was hardly any of them that, that knew that we, we did this in 2006. Second, they, um, I'm, I'm not getting a positive response about giving a hundred thousand dollars because they, um, that, that, no one's really seen it has, um, a community deal that, that they're seeing it has a, has a Prairie Dunes project. And to, um, to give money to, um, to that private entity to better themselves. I'm, I'm, I'm not getting, that's why I asked for, for a time last time to talk to more people. I'm, I'm, I'm just not getting a positive response from people that I, I talked to. Obviously, I don't think anybody really knew about it.
Didn't know that we had the event in oh six?
Oh, no, that, that, that we gave money in oh six.
Did they feel like the event was good?
Uh, yeah, I feel like the event's very good too. But, um.
How are you going to have an event like that without a, without a place to do it?
Without a place to, that's correct.
How are you going to do that? How are you going to, how are you going to host an event like that without?
Prairie Dunes do it.
We have the golf course.
Yeah, you have the golf course. You, you pay the bills. I mean, where you get that money from?
The championship is a completely separate budget from the country club. We have to raise the money. We have to sell corporate hospitality. We have to sell tickets. We have to sell merchandise. It's a completely separate six or seven million dollar budget. What happens if the club loses a half a million dollars?
If, if the club loses half a million dollars, uh, I think that people would be a little more entitled, I, I would be way more entitled to help out if, if it was, um, but I've been, I, I've never heard where it lost.
About broke even last time. Like I explained, when you take opportunity costs for being closed and all the costs, labor, those things that are associated with that, doesn't factor in the, the volunteer errors and things like that. There's a, there's a community benefit. I, I, I wasn't going to focus on that, that Brad has, if you want to go there and, and hear about that a little bit, but, um, I'm sorry that your constituency doesn't feel like it's a, a good event, but, uh, it's, it's going to go on, uh, whether or not that you all want to participate or not. And we appreciate your consideration for sure.
I'm, I'm just not getting the, the general feed. I'm not getting a positive feedback from, you know, from anybody, um, hardly anybody that, that I've talked to. And I've, I've tried to mention it to everybody that, that I've, um, that, that, that I've came across to, just to see how they feel about that. That, that, that's in, that's in my, my district. I, I didn't go outside my district. And I, I just haven't, there, there, there's very little people that, that agree we're spending that money.
I understand.
I actually volunteered in 2006, I think it was.
Mm-hmm.
And had a great time, met a lot of different people from all over the country. But, uh, but one thing I'd like to bring up, we have the Kansas State Fair in Hutchinson, Kansas. It's the state fair, not the Reno County fair. And so when that fair comes here, we, we get money from that as a benefit through taxes and things, but we also have to have a lot of security and we do a lot of other things that have to make that fair go off. And they don't come in here and say, you know, we would like some money from you, but they expect, because it's here, to have some services. So I just find it, it, you know, part of the, the event is that you have to, you know, you have to have capital to make it, things work. And the benefit from this tournament is I work at the college now, after I retired from Pools Plus. And, uh, we have a golf team that has four international students that part of the reason why they came is because of Prairie Dunes and the fact that we have such good, you know, golfing facilities in this area. And, uh, they have family and friends that have come here from Ireland to play on this golf course and stuff. But it's, so it doesn't just reach out just a little bit, but it goes, you know, clear around the world. And so that tournament will be viewed from every channel, you know, that it's put on. And so we're going to get some exposure. So even if we don't break even, you know, you said we made 50% back, we're, we're still getting that, that, uh, good publicity. And, uh, Brad told me one time, if the fair was here and we weren't there, people would think we were out of business, even if we didn't sell a single thing. So we, you know, they've still going there. So, uh, when you go someplace, you, you expect to get something back hopefully, but, uh, but even if you don't, the exposure is worth something.
I, Mr. Pryor, was it? They said you had some figures that would help us determine what we get back. You've taken the time to be here. I'd, I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, I'll just, um, Brad Pryor co-chair for the, for the tournament. I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I appreciate Richard's comments, the big picture in this and, and, and just some highlights. I, I have figures. I believe you guys have been sent the figures, um, to, to preview. 2006 Prairie Dunes wa- was a country club. Currently it's a destination, nationally known golf course. I've learned this through the years of, of being involved with Prairie Dunes. We're on, we're on a list. We are on bucket lists all over the world. People want to fly their jets in here, take commercial airliners, get here to play our course because we're on the list. Back in 2006, we had 500 regular members. That's down 40%. What makes us special is we have backfilled that with national members. We have a national member waiting list a mile long of people that want to come in and spend money in Hutchinson. Through the years, we've added lodges. We've added more places to stay, more revenue. And, and what we're seeing in the real estate market, which I think is really special for our community, is people are now saying, I want to retire in Hutchinson, Kansas because of Prairie Dunes. So there is some nice figures. It's a $22 million direct impact to our community. The sales tax is close to offsetting. And, and I know there's past figures that didn't, that didn't exactly show that, but the big picture items, we're going to get tons of TV. Being, part of being special and being on this list, on this bucket list, is this national exposure. And to your point, um, about students wanting to come to Hutchinson, that's what makes us different. That's what makes us special. That's what's on the map. So, um, it was, it was brought up in one of our meetings that this is our World Cup. And I kind of chuckled at that and, and, and got a kick out of that, but, but truly it is our World Cup. This is a, a senior championship that, no promises, but Tiger Woods could be walking down number 18 on, on Prairie Dunes. It's a special opportunity. It is the senior championship that's hosted. And, and it's a lot of risk for the club. It's a lot of volunteer hours. And, um, I, I believe the economic impact is there, but whatever we're lacking with exposure and keeping us on that list with these tournaments, we've had the, uh, the NCAA men's, um, we've had obviously a Senior Open in the past, uh, 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 2002, a ladies' PGA Tour. We are on that list because of these tournaments. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of investment and it's very, very risky for the membership to continue to be on that list. And that's why we're here asking for the support today.
Any comments?
I attended the 2006. I'm not a golfer, but I wanted to see what was happening. And I was pretty, really impressed with the amount of people that were there and from all over. And I'm not just talking about across the water. So I'm talking about around the state of Kansas. I, even if I cut your economic impact in half, which I never fully, completely believed the full figures anyway, I don't think you do either, but it's a great, it's a great return. And I, it, it's kind of like me out on, I got a little farm out here. And I can't eat that farm, so I need to make some money off of it. And this is kind of what I feel that this golf tournament will have the effect upon Reno County, specifically Hutch, Reno County, also Salina McPherson, Wichita. It's going to spill over because we just don't have the capacity to handle very much percentage of that. But in my conversations with Chamber, LeAnn and Deborah and some of them, they're going to make a concerted effort to do what they can to be able to fill that Airbnb's, uh, any other lodges around. And, and to me also, we probably need, and I think they've talked about it, is how to market Reno County, Hutch and Reno County, right there at the facility, uh, at the tournament. I hope that can happen, uh, providing we tell PGA they need to have something out there, whether it's a flashing, flashing, uh, sign of some kind that, that switches every 30 seconds or a minute or whatever. Uh, I think we can enhance our ability to promote Hutchinson and Reno County through that kind of effort somewhere within the realm of where people travel to and from the, the tournament. And, and for that reason, I, I think it's, it will return, won't return it in 2029 all. Maybe it takes two years to return it. But that's, that's the fact of doing economic development, the way I understand. It'd be great if you could just get them in all at once, but it doesn't happen that way. So from that standpoint, I'm, I think it's, uh, worth the effort over what I saw in 2006. And, uh, you've got to know that they're going to be spending more money this year or 2029, just because everything went up.
Well, I made that comment last week, similar to Ron's. If we could leverage what we're spending here, like you're saying, it's coming back not only right here, but over a period of time as a destination. And I know guys who go to these destination places and spend time for a week. But we should also really, before we send anybody away, promote our local businesses. Like I said, our Airbnbs and, and, and hunting lodges that are essentially furnished apartments for rent. Those kind of things, I think, help the outlying communities as, as, because your first thought is right here in Hutch, because that's where it's at, convenience. But every one of those people that we keep from going to another county, they're going to spend, they're going to eat somewhere, they're going to fuel the car up. I'd rather have them doing that in Reno County than it at night somewhere else and, and just driving in like you would. And I think we can help that a lot with this advertising idea that, that we advertise our businesses, we advertise our, we've got a couple of world-class museums. Things happening in Hutch besides the golf tournament, because not everybody that's with these guys, families and stuff, yeah, they're going to go out some, but there's a lot of alternative stuff that we can guide them to or that they, if, if it's listed as a, like in your brochures, uh, other things to do in Hutch or whatever, so that these places we have get the advertisement and we leverage this into other areas to help justify the cost. Because when we spend money, we spend money. All the people coming from all over the county and, uh, certain areas are going to have a lot more benefit, but they got other, it's going to happen that way, but, but I think we could at least, uh, leverage that. And a lot of those deals that'd be like what you're talking about, come a little later. And a lot of those deals would be like what you're talking about, come a little later. Maybe bring the family back. They know the area and, and for, so that's, that's what I've, I've got to get past. And I'm, I'd like you guys to at least, if we're going to do something together, commit to helping advertise other businesses. So, and if, if they're interested in being here now and they bring their family back, I'm sure they're going to come back and be one of those guys that's, you're wanting to come back and play. So we both benefit that way.
You know, there's a, there's places in Purdy Prairie, at least one, there's places in Haven that maybe somebody wants to be 15 or 30 minutes away from the tournament. Maybe they want to have, while they're here, maybe some of those families, I know the golfers probably wouldn't necessarily, but maybe some of the families that like a little bit of look at rural areas. And those need to be used.
With our, with our fan base of 75,000 that we expect to, to attend the event, we'll, we'll definitely need all of those rooms and, and would be happy to advertise those the, the best of our ability. If I could add one last thing, and, and I appreciate the time. I think the biggest, the big picture item with this that I get most excited about, I love our community. I know Mr. Fee loves our community. I'm on the membership committee at Prairie Dunes and we interview prospective members from all over the country. There is an increasing number of people that are moving here because of Prairie Dunes, buying homes. And, and this is their retirement community and they're applying for membership. Gives me a lot of hope for our growth, our housing. It, it's, it's exciting. It's exciting to have people say, you know what, I can pick anywhere in the world. I'm not going to Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm not going to Naples. I'm going to Hutchinson, Kansas. And that's a, that's a, that's a neat deal for us. It's a special place. I, I think this is the best place to, to, to live in the United States. I'm biased, but, so this, being on this list, top 20 golf course in the, in the United States, top 30, I believe, in the world. Don't fact check me on the, on the world numbers, but it, it, it's a special place and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a special community. So we appreciate the consideration and would be glad to partner in any way we can to help our community.
Brad, you brought this up, so I'm going to ask, how many came to Hutch in the last few years to buy property and, and to be a member of that?
10 to 12, 10 to 12. That's people that have maybe some Kansas ties and, and decided to, to come back here and, and, and say, this is where we're, this is where we're going to live. So it's, our membership is, there is a waiting list a mile long. Majority of them are nationals that want to come in and come out. But that really speaks to me from the real estate standpoint of, you know, that drives our, drives our local housing prices, increases our values and, and really helps us out. So supply and demand.
Would you say that improvement of the airport would help that?
Oh, I think our airport, yes, to answer your question. What makes Prairie Dunes next level is, I'll use Sand Hills, which has a better ranking than, than ours. Where you fly into North Platte, Nebraska, you're an hour and 15 minutes away, hour and 30 minutes away from Sand Hills. It's county roads, not the best roads out, you know, they're, they're not a lot of traffic. Prairie Dunes, you fly into Hutchinson Regional Airport. We have one of the best airports, I'm a pilot, one of the best airports around. I believe that. I, I'd even put it up with Topeka. Fly into our airport, you're five minutes away, the shuttle bus is waiting out there at all times. Every time I'm taking a lesson, there's a Prairie Dune shuttle bus out there bringing people in. So our airport is key to that, that experience, that exposure and accessibility that I can fly in from Houston with a group, stay the weekend and fly right out. And I guarantee they're getting fuel. So I think upkeeping our airports, we have, we have an airport that you should be proud of. And I know it's not cheap.
I think it is. Any more comments? Or questions for, you know, Mr. Fee or Pryor?
Thanks for, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for making yourselves available. Appreciate it. Any discussion up here at this point? I guess we're to a point where I would call for a motion if somebody has one.
Get started. I'll move to, let's see, memorandum of understanding with regards to the 2029 Open. Member understanding authorized the county administrator to sign the document related to the 2020, the county's relationship to the 2029 US Open.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So any further comment by anybody before we vote? My comment would be, if nobody else has anything, is, is what's this, the second time in my lifetime that we can get this kind of exposure? And that has a lot to do with it. And if, if we can actually get the advertising, and I'm, these are gentlemen that have done business with, within this community for years. And if they say they'll do their best to work on that with staff about advertising what we have here in Reno County, does a lot for the way I feel I, I can vote. So with that, is there any other further comment before we vote? Cindy, please.
Commissioner Parks?
Why do you always start with me?
I like you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, I wasn't going to, but I'll say yes to this. And it's not a great deal of money. I'll just qualify my vote there. Just in conscience to the people, I, I do see the value in it. And so I'll go ahead and go along with a yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
I personally see the value in it, but I've kind of researched as best I could, so I'm going to have to say no.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
So motion passes for one. Item 7B on the agenda. Reno County Health Department, aid the local ATL grant application. I'm assuming Carla's got something to say to us.
Good morning, commissioners again. Carla Nichols, Director of Public Health. So you have an application before you. So we bring this to you on an annual basis. So this is our grant application that we submit to KDHE for their approval, but it also requires your approval on a signature page. It is a application for our grants for KDHE for July 1 of 2025 through June 30th of 2026 for $975,950.27. So that's the first document. Then also it is the Kansas Department of Health and Environment Healthy Families Outreach Prevention and Early Intervention Program Grant, which is a pass-through grant that actually goes to the Kansas Children's Service League. And that is for $320,000.
What does that latter take care of?
So it is for, it helps the Kansas Children's Service League for new and low-income parents and childrens with an emphasis on adolescent and pregnant teen parents at, at risk for Reno County. The emphasis, so it does help a lot of children in our community. And it does, is administered through the Kansas Children's Service League.
Any further questions or comments? Well, Carla's.
This is basically just a sign so you can apply for the grant?
Correct.
Well, I know it's the old standard for me. I, I do disagree with some of the services we provide and some of the stuff that's in there. But I realize if we survive as a health department, we have to have the monies to do that. I mean, that's another philosophical question for another day. And I think in light of what's going on, we'll figure it out pretty shortly. So I'll be, I'll be silent at this point.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, as written.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second, any discussion at this point? If none, Cindy, help us out.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Onto item 7C, youth services report. I think Joe's here to help us out with that.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for having me here. There is a lot of information there, as you pointed out, some things to read. But 2024 ended up being a really solid year for us. And our detention center started out pretty rough, but there were several emissions and we were at or near capacity for the entire last quarter of that. So made up a lot of ground there. I know we have a couple new commissioners here and I'm just bringing you up to date real quick. Quick overview of youth services. We have an emergency shelter that has changed quite a bit over the past 10 to 15 years. Our emergency shelter used to be just that. And it would hold youth until they had a court appearance, which may be in 72 hours. And at the most, usually they might stay there for two to three weeks. We have changed now to become an RCY2, which is a shelter that allows youth to stay there on a more permanent basis. So some of the youth we have now end up living with us for well over a year, sometimes close to a year and a half or more, until they can find a home for them or reintegration back with their family, maybe. Our detention facility, that population is obviously dependent upon the level of crime and amount of crime that's going on. We don't want to see those numbers high, but we're very fortunate to have a facility here to keep our community safe and the alleged offenders safe while they're with us. So I alluded to when I started here that 24 was, did really well for us. The amount of money we bring in on the shelter side, that number is set by the state. They pay us a certain amount per child. They dictate that. The amount on the detention side, we are currently charging $150 per youth per day. We are sending out contracts now. We're going to raise that by 10% for next year. It, it has to happen. We haven't done that in almost 10 years, but neither have any of the other detention centers around the state. I keep a close eye on what they're charging. The ones that can charge more than that are, are some of the bigger towns. Wichita is one of those, Lawrence. They have their own facilities, just based on their populations, that they serve basically their own counties. We serve everybody from here on west, north and south. So we have all these counties. Garden City does have a detention center as well as Junction City. But we routinely bring in youth here from Goodland, Ellis County, all the way down south and all around us here, obviously. So on that shelter side, since we, we cannot control that price that we are paid. Try to summarize this. A while back in 17, there was some legislation brought about that said, hey, we're going to close down all of these residential facilities in Kansas and use that money to put into the community for counseling services and things to help these families. So they closed down facilities for children who needed those kind of placements. Not so much emergency shelters, but placements called juvenile justice authority placements that youth that had some criminal history still had a place to go to stay versus staying with kids who were going to potentially be foster children. So since those facilities were changed, they pumped a lot of that money back in. But Western Kansas and us, we don't see that. We don't have, if you have a youth that's in trouble out in Tribune and needs services, they got to travel quite a ways to get that. So a lot of that money that we saw go in, Eastern Kansas got a lot of that. They have the facilities and they can market that and they have the, the population to support that. So that being said, that closed down those facilities. So our emergency shelter here now houses youth long-term, like I said earlier, for, you know, a year and a half or more. That typically would be just youth who need a, a home to stay because of their home setting was not able to support them. That's still true, but now we are receiving youth with criminal history that also are duly adjudicated as a child in need of care. And they're also been adjudicated in the court system with criminal activity. So we are seeing a lot of youth come to us in our shelter that have that criminal history. And some of them require they can't be in a double occupancy room. So what we have done with that, just at the end of this last year, we had Reno County maintenance here come over and help us with one of our rooms, divided it into two. And then by our policies and things, we have to have some square footage per room. We were able to keep that intact, make that into two rooms. So now we can hold these single youth that are required to have a single bedroom. And then the state will pay us more than their allotted amount because these youth are higher risk. So we've made that adjustment. We're making the adjustment in detention to bump our costs up to, you know, be competitive. And yet, you know, cost of food and everything like that, we need to raise that amount. So I plan on doing this for quite a while. So I'm hoping to be around for, to keep a steady eye on this and make the progress that we need to do to obviously keep our community safe, keep the children safe that are with us and to help our community out here.
Guys, we got Joe there. Any questions for him?
No, I don't have a question, but Joe, thanks for the work that you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Yeah, I'm very proud of our staff, our, our kids themselves. You know, our staff have done a lot of things. They, last summer, they did almost 1,000 hours of community service here. Our kids are out working. We have some kids working in the community here at our restaurants. Our kids attend our public schools here. It's a tough, tough job for our staff, but they are absolutely tremendous.
You, you give a lot personally too, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
You're a great asset, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Do you see any new trends coming up or increasing or things in that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we do. You know, I think we talked a little bit about this last year. It's not as new, but it's so prevalent is the, the drug use, the fentanyl now that's, that's going through the communities. Our, the, the frequency and the availability for drugs for these children is scary. We, in our detention program now, we have a grant going that we, we, we have a drug and alcohol program right here in Reno County, down the street here. They come into our facility and do assessments on kid who, the youth who meet criteria and then provide that treatment for them right there. So that helps that a lot. And they do mental health also. We have a therapist that comes in from Horizons and provides therapy to all the kids who meet those needs. So the newer trends. So the newer trend, to your question specifically, same thing over and over is the drug use and the abuse. Our whole community here is so supportive. Our school district supplies teachers to us. They teach in our detention center. We have two teachers in there. And these kids are getting credits while they're with us. So and with these higher-level crimes that we're seeing, you know, some murders, rapes, things like that, those youth are on our detention center itself for over a year or more, waiting for these bigger cases to be completed. So while they're there, we try to help them as much as we can. They're coming out of there with some credits and some just day-to-day skills. So, yeah, very proud of that.
Are we gaining ground on the drug problem? It seems so prevalent. I mean, it is on and on and on.
It sure is. It's not tangible. You know, it's hard to say that. I think every time we have a youth in our program over there that stays with us, like in detention specifically, they're learning some things about how to live a life clean and try to break that cycle of their families. So it's hard to see today what kind of progress you make with the children you've been working with over the last six months. So hopefully, you know, I was a probation officer here for twenty-three years before I moved over to Youth Services. I see a lot of the same families coming through, you know? But there's a bunch that I don't, you know, and those I don't, you don't see that. And we have to focus on the negative, unfortunately. We see these ones that keep coming back through, and we keep trying to help them to break that cycle. So I don't know that we're making progress, but we're certainly here to help the ones that are needing it right now.
Nobody has anything? Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that.
Very much.
You always have an in-depth report. I think most of us have read through it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
With that, item seven D under business, the appointment of a citizen to serve a three-year term on the Planning Commission and its Resolution 2025. And Cindy will have the number. It's a request by Reno County Planning and Zoning to... Oh, I skipped a line, right? Yes, I did. Sorry. So... Do you want to say something, or do we want Planning and Zoning to bring forward who they have recommended?
You can ask Don, but in the packet, there's two applicants for Planning Commission.
Correct.
They're both qualified applicants, and it's really up to the county commission to decide who to choose. I do not believe there was a specific recommendation, but Don can enter.
Don Britton, Director of Public Works. There is no recommendation. We feel like both of them would be good Commissioners, so it's all up to you.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Keith Nysley. I'm just going to step out there and do it. My reasons for that is he's been in construction most all of his life. He understands permitting. He understands those things. He'd been in real estate business, and he also is a local business owner of a pretty good business. And I think he'd be a tremendous asset to the Planning Department. No offense to the other one. I think he'd be good as well. But I just think Keith is a lot more qualified to take that position.
I would go along with that also because I've known Keith for a ton of years. So he's a good local business and takes pride in what his jobs look like and how he does them and everything. So I would go along with that.
What business is he in now?
He owns Fairview Service.
Fairview Service?
He does still have some real estate stuff, but him has brought in a construction company for years and years, too.
At this point, what, we have a nomination? Do we possibly have another nomination, or do we vote on this nomination? What's the correct procedure?
We've done a vote. I think what we did before was just had two different nominations and voted. Vote for one name and then vote for another.
Okay, we've got one motion and a second to nominate Keith Nysley. Any other nominations?
We all nominate James Slickow. I think either one of them would be good. I don't think we're on Keith real well, too. But he is from the zoned area.
Unzoned area, isn't he?
James is from the zoned area.
Yes, correct, correct. I'm sorry.
I nominate James Slickow, and I know both of them real well. They both make excellent people on the Planning and Zoning Commission. But Keith is in an unzoned area. James is in a zoned area. And just, while it doesn't make any difference, can we have another one that lives in town? We can. We've got room on the board to have another one in town. Okay. That was one question. I wanted to make sure. So really, that's kind of the... Even though Keith is from my district, but I just think we need to look at... We've been pretty well told that there's no zoning in that area. And I think those that are affected by zoning probably are a little closer to the...
There is zoning in that area. There's wind zoning.
Well, yes. There is wind zoning.
Well...
But that's my two cents worth, okay?
And I'd second that motion to nominate him, James. My thought process is, in that southeast corner, on the very east edge of the county, we, especially south of the Arkansas River, we have not much, there's no representation there technically. West of the lake, we have a member on the board, good member. But that's a natural barrier, and there are some different things there. Other areas have...
Do we get a second before you discuss if there's going to be a second?
He seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, you did second it. Okay, I didn't hear that. Sorry. Sorry, sorry.
Did what?
Yeah, Ron brought up you seconded.
Okay, I didn't catch that.
Yeah. So with that, I'm thinking it spreads out the... It spreads out the membership in the county a bit. And I would, I know both the gentlemen. They are good people. So it's a tough decision. I realize that. But there are other people on the Planning and Zoning that are out in that area.
There's other people out in Pleasantville or the area where Nysley's at that's on the board?
Yes, one guy north of Platteville.
One guy north of Platteville?
Western part.
Mark von Achen County Planner. There's one person that lives out in the western part of the county.
So we're talking Platteville?
Yeah, the Platteville area, yeah.
Yeah.
And the rest of the group is... Tiny in this northeast.
All close to each other.
In one area.
Yeah, a lot of them are in the northeast area. There's three. Three, I think, are in the northeast part of the county. Currently, we have one commission member that lives in the city of Hutchinson. So to answer your question, yes, you could appoint another person that lives in the city or a city.
And all of those are pretty much in the zoned area now?
Yes.
And now what's the procedure?
I think to do a roll call on the first nomination of Mr. Nysley and then a roll call of the second nomination of Mr. Slickow and see what happens.
Whomever gets the most...
Whoever gets, yeah, whoever gets three is going to be on the board.
So in the... And we call for Mr. Nysley's vote first because he was nominated first, is the way I'd see it.
I would agree with that.
That's correct. All right. Cindy, would you help us out with the roll call?
Commissioner Parks?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
I'd say no, if that's proper terminology.
And Commissioner Wagner?
No.
Okay.
So it looks like we filled the position, so there's no need for the second vote.
I don't think so, no. It would just be confusing. You had three votes in favor of Mr. Nysley, so he's elected.
Like I said, they'll both do an excellent job. So it's just a matter of not being against one, but just having some thoughts on why you would vote for one.
Yeah. Guys, how do you feel about a short break? It looks like some of this stuff might get to be quite a discussion. Would that be appropriate? Quick little five-minute break and then back to the rest of the agenda?
I might give ten minutes, just if you don't mind.
Ten minutes.
Okay, good enough.
At the request of County Administrator.
Yeah, there may be a line. Well, we'll see you at twenty till.
Hey, Doug.
Item seventy is next thing on the agenda. Planning request, and that's for solar regulations. Randy, is there anything you need to bring us up to date on or make clear?
Not on this. Don and Mark are here for planning to kind of talk about this one, but this is related to the study session that you guys had last week.
Either one of you guys?
Mark von Achen, county planner. As Randy said, this is a request to create Article twenty-six for commercial solar regulations. And as he said, last week, we had a lengthy study session to kind of go over the specifics of these regulations and try and answer questions the board may have regarding how regulations are interpreted. This board provided staff some feedback on some potential changes by consensus that you maybe would like to have seen. Those changes are highlighted in yellow in your packet, and so I would encourage you to look at those, and you still have an opportunity to adjust the wording. We hope as staff that we captured what the board was looking for in the wording, but like I say, you know, you still have an opportunity to make additional changes or changes to other sections of those regulations, if you will. And as we briefly discussed at the study session two, there is a planning commission resolution that goes with these regulations, but it's not subject to your approval. It's just a planning commission regulation that outlines suggestions that this board can use when you are into developing a developer's plan with a potential applicant for a project. And so those changes, you know, in there can be modified by the planning commission at your suggestions at will without an additional public hearing. But if this is adopted, then any changes that we want to make to this document will have to go back through another public hearing process to modify these regulations. So with that, I would stand for any questions, and like I say, Don is here as well.
Question. Part of the planning agreement would be, or is it a separate agreement on decommissioning?
The decommissioning is embedded in with the planning commission resolution, but there are also references throughout the regulations that require an applicant to file a decommissioning agreement with the developer's plan. So multiple references in there.
So those, those things would be addressed at that point?
By, by the board, yes. A potential developer is not going to be able to not do a decommissioning plan.
Okay, okay.
The resolution is just planning commission resolution?
That is correct. It is not a county commissioner resolution. It's already been adopted by the planning commission, as you can see, assigned by the planning commission chairman. That document will be provided to any potential applicant early in the process for any type of project, so he would know potential topics that could be coming up in any kind of development plan.
Or is that, is that going to be?
I mean, my fear of that is that it comes down to say this and that, then, or they want this or not, and then, well, it's in the resolution. Well, the resolution has no teeth, does it?
The resolution does not have any teeth. These are merely just suggestions that this board can use when doing a development plan with a potential project applicant.
Why does it have to be a resolution? How come it can't be a suggestion?
It's a planning commission resolution. It's not going to be a resolution by this board. This board will adopt a resolution to adopt the regulations if you so choose, okay? But this is already just a planning commission resolution, and these are merely suggestions. These are topics that the planning commission feel are very important, that should be included in any type of development plan, but the planning commission cannot dictate to this board what topics go into a development plan.
Maybe another way of saying it, just to hit it two different angles. The regulations, the, the, what's our, the resolution that's before you today, if you adopt that, that would create the solar regulations that have to be followed. Those are the have-tos.
As amended.
As amended, yeah. And then if we get a, based on those, if we get an application for a permit, then, then that, at that point, the developer who wants to build something will give a plan, this development proposal, and then we will use, if I'm here, what I would do is I would like to use what the planning commission's made, the guidelines or the, their resolution, whatever you want to call it, and just kind of go and get, I'll be, what I would do is put it side by side with the development agreement and say, okay, did they do this? And look at it, and just use it as kind of a checklist to see what kind of things hit. There might be some items that are in the resolution that, based on the proposal and based on the land, don't really apply or don't apply the way we think they do, so we won't, so we're not required to do them, but it's just kind of a document we'll use as a proposal. But the main thing I'm trying to get to is the specific development agreement will have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, so you guys will be the final say on that.
This is.
Yeah, in drafting, I, Don always gets it, not just approve it, but it'll be your document that you'll control.
This is not a negotiation. We've talked about this. This is up to the county commission to make those rules and regulations regarding both the decommissioning agreement as well as a development agreement. And I would much prefer to see those things just say as, is, because it says it sets four specific regulations. That's, no, excuse me, that's wrong. But I would rather see it, these are suggestions rather than a resolution. I think you're right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, so many times you get a recommendation from, from the state or whatever, that all of a sudden that turns into a rule. And, you know, I mean, a recommendation is fine, but I mean, it's just a recommendation. Why do we need all this resolution or?
They've got to convey it some way, right?
The planning commission's resolution that they passed is not binding on you guys, so.
But, but it's a way for them to pass their suggestion to us.
Yes, they have, it is a formal, they have, they have identified their proposal, what they, their opinion, it's just an opinion letter. But the reason why we can't, but we can't, the problem with the development agreement is you have to be, it's very specific to what's actually proposed, so it's hard to sit and make, until you have an actual project that you're looking at, it's hard to put all the rules for a development agreement in there. It's, so, so we're looking today to see if we have regulations that would be binding on everyone, and one of those would be requiring them to come back and have you guys propose an actual plan.
Are you wanting our approval of this resolution at all?
No. No. This board does not approve that planning commission resolution. It's just additional information because it goes directly with the commercial solar regulations, which requires this board's approval. I provided that resolution because this, this resolution helps tie into and helps you to understand what we're writing in the regulations. When we talk about a developer's plan, you may be reading that, well, what is going into a developer's plan? You refer to that resolution, and that resolution number is also referenced in the regulations.
It's like a template. If I'm building something, I have to have something to build with, and I have to have directions on how to do it, and even if it's a suggestion, you still have to have that available so you understand what you're, what we're dealing with. So none of us are solar experts, so we need to take those, those suggestions in that template and go from there.
I don't think any of us are, including the planning board, are solar experts.
Yeah.
So to make this simple, when you guys create, you create the developer plan, and the decommissioning is within the development plan, and those should not be part of the regulations because then they're binding, because when, when a project comes in, you need to create it based on, just like what Patrick said, word is, all the circumstances. All, so where it's not a regulation, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they're so embedded in this, have listened to all the public hearings, have been involved in this for months, if they was going to create a development plan, these would be some of the items they would address. So they want you to know that, and that's all this is, is a tool for you. That's all. It's not going to turn into nothing unless you turn it into something, which is a developer's agreement.
Thank you.
No, it still has to be passed, though, for us.
Yes. Yes.
I understand.
Any, any further comments here before I ask for a motion? Do I hear a motion to, to? Do I hear a motion on this resolution in planning case number twenty twenty-three dash ten?
I will motion to accept it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. At this point, do we have any discussion before we vote?
I just really thought our study session was really good.
Yeah. I'll second that. I mean, it's, you guys showed us and we read everything through every motion, so very good time spent. Time well spent, I should say. With that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment than Cindy?
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Okay, now we're dealing with seven F. And that's, did I say that wrong? Read that as twenty-ten, and we didn't have, we didn't have a number up here in, in what we just passed. Oh eight? Everybody okay with their vote now that we got the proper number in place? Or do we need to correct that some way? All right, good enough. So now we're on twenty, twenty-two, the resolution case, it's still with case twenty twenty-three ten, but that isn't the number of the resolution. That's where I got goofed up. And it's a request by the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend an April twenty sixteen edition of the Reno County zoning regulations by creating Article fifteen dash eleven eight. This item was referred back to the planning commission on October ninth of twenty twenty-four. So any discussion, or do we hear, do I, I'm calling for a motion if there's no discussion?
Is this just simply a formality to insert the zoning into the regulations? Is it not insimplifying it?
The, the next case is regarding the prohibition of the regulations. So is that what you're reading, Mr. Chairman?
Seven F. You want to read that, Patrick? Or we get it on the screen so we all know what we're talking about and what's, what's happening in it?
So what's happening is, going back to this whole process, you know, we've gone through, we started with, we started with residential and then limited commercial, then commercial, and you've made all the regs. Along that, along the journey, sorry, it's been a while we've been doing this, along that way, there was a discussion that was sent back to the planning commission to ban, to prohibit commercial solar within a certain area of the county, which was the Ninoska Valley, Ninoska River watershed. And so.
Of the zone portion?
The zone, yes. So this would, what's before you today, if you adopted, would prohibit commercial solar, Mark, check me if I'm wrong here, because we all need to be on this image, prohibit commercial solar within the land, and there's a map that they presented, I think, as part of this, within the zoned portion of the county, which is also both zoned and within the Ninoska River watershed. Okay, so there would be, so all the regs, there wouldn't even, you, commercial solar could not happen there. Prohibited, banned, whatever word you want. That's what the, if you adopt this, that's what happens.
And planning and zoning's recommendation was okay with?
They brought it back to for.
Yes. This board referred it back to the planning commission for that consideration. The planning commission looked at your consideration and agreed to the text amendment that would prohibit commercial solar regulations, which you just adopted, in the watershed according to the map that is in your packet, and so. That's, that's the map. So you'd be creating essentially Article fifteen-one-eleven-eight, which will prohibit in the fully zoned area of the county and in that watershed, commercial solar.
And that's what we had both talked about. So at this point, any questions, or do I hear a motion?
I'll motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion? What?
If nobody else has a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Well, I live in the area, and it's a very fragile area, and planting and zoning sees it that way, so helps protect the lake and the waters of the lake, so that's all I've got to say about it. Anybody else? I'd say Cindy, you're up.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
And it's oh-nine.
That's what I thought, we can't have two the same. That's a good deal. Now, that concludes our business items for today, unless we've missed something or you want to make a comment or?
I, I think, you know, the solar process has been such a process, we might just talk a little bit about the next, what happens next, and Don was going to make a comment about that, too.
So as you know, you have a moratorium on, on the solar throughout the entire county. So as you know, you have a moratorium on, on the solar throughout the entire county. And so you need to realize that as of now, you don't, it ends May 1st. As of now, you really don't need a moratorium in the zoned area of the county because you just passed regulations. What you need to think about, and not today, but think about, is you don't need a moratorium in the western part of the county unless you're going to put regulations out there. So that's something you need to think about between now and May 1st.
You're talking about the possibility of an overlay of what we have?
Well, what I'm saying...
Or just, just giving them the same basic regulations?
There is no regulations for solar out west because that was unzoned. There's only regulations for wind because you moved them out there. My point is, is you made this moratorium for commercial solar countywide because there was no regulations. You now have regulations for the zoned area of the county. You don't need that moratorium for the zoned area of the county, even though it's going to May 1st. You do not need a moratorium for the western two-thirds of the county unless you're going to regulate it. That's a decision you're going to have to come up to.
And you would regulate them how? With, with the same regulations, basic regulations we got here? So there at least has to be some, as the lady was pointing out earlier, if, if, if we have those, some regulation out there, then before somebody could come in and just build, they would at least have to have public meetings and go through that process, whereas now they wouldn't have to?
Well, they can't do nothing now because of moratorium, but yeah.
Yeah, but I meant...
If it's unregulated, they can do what they want to do.
Anytime they want without...
Sure, that's, that's what, that's what, that's what unzoned is.
Okay.
And so you're going to have to decide whether you're going to zone the unzoned area other than wind for solar, like you did wind, or zone it, unzone it, whatever. You'd say, have to make that decision up. So right now, the only reason there's a moratorium out there is for you to decide whether you're going to regulate it or not. If you're going to regulate it, then you create regulations, you shove them out there, you do whatever you're going to do. If you're not going to do that, you don't, the moratorium is not needed.
Then get rid of the moratorium?
Correct.
Okay. If we were to do that out in the unzoned areas, we could utilize the same regulations for solar that we approved here.
Sure.
Cecily, please do. If you do decide to do something like that, please just, please be consistent, because...
On my behalf, I'll speak to that. And when you say please do, not forcing the board to zone that, that's an unzoned portion of the county, and you really can't zone unzoned portions of the county. They've made the choice to be unzoned, I believe they should be unzoned on everything. And then that's the choice they made. If they want to be zoned, then they need to be a part of the county zoning. And they made that absolutely clear in the meetings we went out to town halls. They did not want to be zoned. I heard that if you wanted to be zoned for this, this, and that. But when we start cherry picking and zoning an unzoned portion of the county, where's that stop? We regulate a neighbor because they don't like their behavior? I mean, we have some areas that need some regulations down south because of some activities going on. We can't touch that, why should we touch this? That's my point.
I, I think people in District 2 don't want overall zoning. But I've had, heard from a number of them that like what we did for wind and would like that done for solar. Now, you may have heard some, we heard a lot of them voice their opinion with regard to full zoning without paying attention to what was being said.
Well, I paid attention. They wanted to zone this, but they don't want to be zoned. So you, you can't really have it both ways.
Only thing I know is what...
I heard them too.
...citizens out there have said that they would like to consider...
I mean, Don brought that point up many, many times at the meetings. It's, it's just, it's ridiculous to zone something when you're an unzoned portion of the county. I'm just saying that because it needs to be said.
I just want to make clear, I was making a quip about not doing a different zoning structure.
I know what you meant, Patrick.
If you're going to do something, you don't want two sets of rules, you want...
You know what I, you know what I meant. I didn't mean to say it the way I did, but I mean, yeah, I'm just kidding.
I just, I mean, I almost hated to bring it up, but I felt like I needed to. So between now and May 1st, I mean, actually, I don't, I don't see why there's a moratorium in the zoned area of the county now for this subject, because now you have regulations. So if anything, that portion of the county should be lifted with this moratorium. And then, and then maintain it out west until you make a decision.
Do, do I hear a motion to that effect? Would that be next?
Yeah, I was, I was going to just bring it to the next meeting, a moratorium, and I, you know...
Okay, good enough, good enough.
A more, a, a resolution that changes, that ends the moratorium.
And I think, I think that's a smart move, relay it to two weeks to a month so that people will know that this is coming about, and then they can let us know. That's where I, I think there's, I'm just kind of like Ron, wanted to talk to his people.
Yes, and, and...
Well, I was told once as a child that sometimes what we wish for when we get it, we don't like it. Just, just putting that out there.
Yeah, yeah.
He went back from the toy to the box.
All right. Having said that, I think we've pretty well discussed all business items. Next, next agenda item would be monthly department reports by Randy.
In your packet are the monthly reports for aging, public transit, automotive, clerk, community corrections, communications, emergency management, and facilities. Wanted to see if there was any questions on anything in those reports that you guys had. All right. Other items I have, just a reminder that the county is having a housing discussion in South Hutchinson at 10:00 AM tomorrow morning, where we're going to be talking about the NRP and other housing incentives. All cities have been invited. So that'll be at the, again, communities...
At 10?
10:00 AM is when it begins, yes.
And that's South Hes Community?
Yes. If you're going to be there, let me know, so make sure that we've notified. I'm not sure if we already have, but there would be a public corm. And I know Commissioner Hersch, you were going to be there, and I didn't know the others, if you were going to be able to attend.
I probably won't, that's my bowling day.
Okay.
What about Richard?
It's really targeted at the city employee or staff level, but it's welcome to anyone who wants to know about it.
Well, I'll see how my day is. Apparently, if these guys aren't able to attend, two of us could.
That's fine.
We'll want full notes, Don, right?
I can't remember what I, what I write doesn't jog my memory. No, I tell you, yeah, we'll, and that's 10. I'll, I'll just try to make that, just so I know how the cities are feeling and what's, what's...
All right, and yeah, we won't be asking you guys to make any comments or add us like a meeting, just if you're in attendance. I believe Patrick will be...
I, I think some of it's just like technical discussions about how this works and then what the options are. But again, the public, I, I don't mind if anyone who's interested to come, it's just going to be a little bit, it might get a little wonky on some of the details, which is fine.
Other item I had, just seeing if there's any interest by a commissioner or two. I'm creating a, well, reviewing CIP requests, capital improvement requests by county departments before a recommended budget comes before the county commission. And there's a lot of requests, so I'll be reviewing those with various directors. I'm putting a small committee together for each section, but wanted to see if any commissioner wanted to be a part of that at the beginning to kind of see the request and have some input. Or if not, I'll just bring it to, as a recommendation, probably in late April, early May for the capital budget.
We could put our input in then, too, after we review that.
Right, but there will be things that I probably have already pulled out as a recommendation by that point. But it's just to see if you guys wanted, just giving you the opportunity in case you want to get in at kind of at the entry level of the budget request.
At what time would these be, or you don't know?
I haven't scheduled them yet, no. Be during the day sometime.
I was just wondering, Randy, you're building all the time?
How far out?
Probably early April.
Kind of, yeah, when you get it done, I'll see a schedule and...
Okay, yeah.
Either one of you two guys interested?
I see the schedule.
Okay, well, once I have the schedule, I'll, I'll let you guys know and then see if one or two of you want to attend. Obviously, we wouldn't want more than that, but... And then at some point, I'll be working with Commissioner Bogner about scheduling budget work sessions. Again, do that probably at the end of May, early June. And we can either do one or two days or do multiple evenings. We could, kind of like the study session, I could bring them in the evenings. Maybe it'd be easier for everyone, and then just a couple of days, you know, a couple of days during the week, a couple of evenings. So you might kind of let me know what your preferences is. Email me just your preferences, and I'll get with Chairman Bogner to schedule.
All meat pizza.
What?
All meat pizza.
Okay, yeah, we'll feed you if it's the evening, more than a water.
Always thinking about my stomach ache.
Yeah, and I mean, with a few exceptions, I'm probably pretty open to whatever you get. So when you announce a date or whatever time, I'll respond, but so you know going in, I'll, I'll try to make it, do my best to make things work.
Okay, because the partner agencies will come probably in the month of April, I believe, to kind of talk about their budget requests and present what their agency does. But then the actual county departments would be budget work sessions, probably late May, early June. Those would be the ones that take the most time. That's all I had.
A few, and I guess commissioner reports and comments. Before we start that, I want to thank, we all, we all need to say our thank yous, and I want to thank you for your work and, and helping us get this along on the previous business items and for your committees and your diligence. I know it's been a struggle, been a struggle on this end, too. With that said, I think I start there. Richard, this, this week, you're up.
I've had a few people from my district that have contacted me, and they've asked me more insight on how the commission works, which is kind of cool. So, but then, you know, when you say you have some decisions to make, they're like, well, we'll be thinking about it when you're doing it. So that being said, nothing major in my district was brought up other than people were always talking about, you know, asking about the explosion, which I don't have anything to do with, but, but anyway, but yeah. So I have been asked a few questions and actually had a person that is in my district bring a letter by work, which I don't encourage my other job, but, but it was no big deal. Thank you.
I want to encourage new commissioners, I know most of Randy and I, I think Don's been there, but to attend a monthly fire chief meeting, to really see what's going on with our fire, volunteer fire chiefs in our pool time. So I'd encourage you to find out when that is and to attend one of those meetings. It's, I think it's pretty enlightening and, and you get comfortable. Last night, Monday night, I was out to Toronto, Sylia, to the city council meetings. And one of the fire chiefs out there sure looked good having a few wood stakes in the ground where the new fire department's going. And he mentioned something that we need to, need to learn more about, that with the location of the ambulance and then taking so much time, whether the Arlington ambulance is in towards Pleasant View or Pretty Fairy has to cover it. If something happens out there, it's a lot of times 30 minutes. And if they were trained, and I don't know anything about this, one more to talk with the emergency manager, but there's a person out of Great Bend that will come in and trade and is not a train and not too expensive on DLS, which is a life-saving technique, which is, from what I understand, is a notch above the CPR. And that they can actually handle some things legally. And so that's something I wanted to check on. Attended SCAD meeting, it's going pretty well. Economic Development District. And attended 1096 last Friday, Corridor Development Association. And it's coming along, and we're going to have a board meeting here with it here coming up fairly shortly. And I have been in contact with a person called me regarding the shooting range down at Sheen. And he is all fired up over the lead containment within that shooting range. And hasn't been cleaned out for a period of time. So he's working with Joe Cyberg on this as well as some other areas, so... Can, can I interrupt and ask a question? Yeah. Isn't that, that's not a county range, that's... I told him, we couldn't do anything with it, but, but he just wanted us to be aware of the situation. But I said, we have no control over this. This is a whole federal state thing. Sorry I interrupted you, but that was... That's okay, state, state really operates, they have people operate. Just thought I'd let you know. Thank you. Anything else, Ron?
Me here, or you want me to go? To that, Ron, we talked about that a minute ago, that training. Patrick, is that something would give us the legal right and recuse us for any legal ramifications if we provide that? I've talked to a couple of different departments myself that they just can't touch anybody with this situation, with the long delays for ambulance coming. And they have multiple medical calls, and then part of the time, I've expressed this to Dave, too, at the hospital, that I'll see in Pleasant View out there, I'll see the ambulance sitting there multiple times a week, sitting there for hours because they call it in because all these are busy here in town. They have to have one closer to dispatch, and that leaves a huge region uncovered. And I think that's probably a great thing to look at doing. But Peggy has told me many times out there and several others on the fire department, that very thing, they can't touch anybody and they want to help them, but they legally are not supposed to.
I, I want to make sure, I haven't researched it, so I don't want to just pop off. I'll talk to Adam at Emergency Management. But there is the, the concept of, you know, if you, if you certainly have a training and you do a bad job, then you could have some liability.
Well, everybody touches somebody, need a first aid, they can be liable.
Yeah, that happens. You got to be careful.
You do.
Well, as far as timing, something you would need to remember, they have permits to operate and they are, they, they have inspectors and audits as to timeframe and various things like that. I know we want to be as efficient as we can, and there might be some changes that need to happen, but you have to be within certain limits to even be permitted. So, so apparently we are within those limits at this time.
Right. Also, I am not done yet quite, sorry.
Yeah.
Been developing, trying to put together a town hall for Michael Plant, the appraiser. So, you know, this for people that's listening and certainly will publicate this event. It'll be the 3rd of April, it's going to be at the city hall at Nickerson. The Highlands will be involved, Nickerson, and, and as it would be, the mayor was here, and Ron, I talked to him. He's, he's all on board with getting as many people to come as well. I know our turnout at the last one, I know there's another one coming, was, was not a tremendous turnout. Yeah, a couple of people, and, and I think that that'd be good to just try to catch a region and get people informed on, on the appraisal process, as many as we can. So we're going to, we've got that planned for April 3rd at 6:30 at City Hall in Nickerson. We'll see how it goes, but hopefully we can have a good turnout and pack the place and not get skinned alive. On that, I'll just, I'm sorry.
Ron?
Community Center at Nickerson, yeah. Everything's a go, and Michael responded a minute ago and said, yes. So with that last comment, I'll turn it over to Mr. Benson.
A couple of things, it's Mr. Bishop that was here earlier. I, I wish there was a way we could, could do, except I, it's, it's become just a battle, and the township left a pretty good mess. I mean, if you, if you drive by there, the, the county, Dawn's crew just cleaned up 95th, and the township did Hallstead, and there's like night and day for the job that was done. It, it, it's pretty unattractive. And, and... And, and, um, the one I've talked to, there's no give either way on, on either side. So, um, um, you know, they, they, they intend to do more on his property and, and I don't know why. But again, like I said, we're, I, I've explained to him, he's, he's been pretty cordial with me. But that, you know, that I can't do nothing about it. But, um, it, it, it is a mess. It, it, it is a mess. Second thing is that I had a call about RCAT. They go to Walmart, you know, once. Um, it was brought to my attention that, and I didn't know it because often I don't use RCAT, but, um, they, at, um, at say, um, Walmart, there, there, there's the, um, stop there at the, by the Murphy's gas station. And at Dylan's on 30th, there's a stop there out there on 30th Street. What's my attention is, um, how am I going to carry my groceries from the front door of Walmart or Dylan's to catch my bus? Um, I stopped by, um, RCAT yesterday, got the best route scheduled stuff, and they do offer door-to-door service. But, uh, the way I read it, you have to be handicapped. You have to get a doctor's sign off on it. But, but, but basically, uh, uh, these people aren't handicapped. But, but there's no one carries their groceries for a block of half. I mean, you know, you just don't. Um, and, but, but, but they, they use the RCAT. I couldn't get past the people at the window, so I, I gave up. I guess, should we, should I make an appointment to talk to Candace? Candace?
I can reach out to Candace and have her contact you.
I don't, I don't know. Are, are they not allowed to go on that property? Or are they, you know?
It may be if, with traffic. I don't know if Dylan's or Walmart wants us set at the front door and wait.
Well, I, I would think so with people hauling groceries out. I mean, it would make sense. But, um-
I have to check into that. I'll, I'll talk with Candace.
Or a designated parking spot so they're not in the lane of traffic. If they would, if they would agree to donate or give a specific spot, might be an answer.
Yeah.
If, if we're allowed to-
Do that?
Go, go on, on private property too. I guess we are on the door-to-door. But like you say, that's-
I'm not sure where at Dylan's or the pickup, but at Walmart, they still could bring their cart. The same way they, before they checked out, they had their items in a cart. They probably could bring their stuff out to the bus in a cart with a-
Yeah, if they had a loading zone where there was a cart rack there for that, it would be really nice.
It's still a, it's still quite a distance. But your car, that, that, does, does Murphy want carts around their gas station?
Well, no, you would have to speak to the individual. I think, I think the answer would be to speak to the individual businesses and see if they would participate in something.
And at Dylan's, it's all the way out on 30th in front of Sonic. So, so that's, that, that, that you don't want shopping carts out there.
No, no, I mean, you-
That is a long walk.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I could have carried groceries.
Couple bags and done.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I, I never even thought about that, um, you know. But, um, I, I guess there's, there's people, um, you know, that use, use, I don't see it, you know, because, um, use that RCAT for, you know, for, for their only transportation. Um, it's, it's, um, it's more than I thought.
Yeah.
I'll be with Candace and talk to your commissioner.
Well, that'd be a good deal to handle it that way.
You know, Ron, I agree with you on the Bishop case. I know it's a county township, but he's lived there 25 years and it is disgusting that they're going to take all his trees out. The very reason he told me he was visiting this morning before he got here, and it was a great visit, that he, he did that because it's blocks of north wind, snow and that stuff. And that they won't even grandfather part of it, want to take it all out. It's just that, you know, he's never going to outlive having trees that big again. So it just doesn't, doesn't make sense to take them clear out, to trim them up.
But it goes.
My opinion, and I don't have anything to say. But if the guy's listening, that's my opinion.
Well, then, I mean, and, and like I said, if you, you know, I've just lived a long half way. I mean, if you, you, you look at the, the, the jobs, now, they did tell me that they're, they're, um, not done. One, two, that they're, they're going to go on and he, he don't want to go on any further south, but, but the, um, it was pretty much told to me that they don't care. They're going to go on south. And I, I, I understand the visibility of the stop sign in the intersection, but, but, but going on south is, is, I, I think we're just pushing buttons here. And, um, of course, I, I hate to tell them that I can't.
Well, but that, that's, that's the way it is. It's not our fight. And, and the other thing, didn't mean to interrupt. Were you finished, Ron? The other, the other thing we need to keep in mind, uh, where those trees are, are they in the right of way or are they not?
They are in the right of way.
Well, it's somebody at some time and you don't know. I guess legally, they probably have a right if it's in their right of way. But you would think, as long as it's been, you know, you, you've got laws of adverse possession and if they allowed him to have it in their right of way all those years, there might be- that's why he needs a lawyer. He doesn't need us. And whatever we think is meaningless. But anyway.
I, one more thing on Ron's thing on the training. I really think that would be a great deal because a number of years ago, about 13 to be exact, uh, I had a massive heart attack. And if I'd have been out in the county, um, I probably wouldn't be here today because of the training that they don't have. And so if you can increase the training for anybody that's doing that, then you could save just one life. And so luckily I, I was here in Hutch and, you know, three minutes from a, from an ambulance station. So just wanted to, I know you got to check it out and everything.
I-
You know, I've, I've served on the township board for a couple of terms. And I don't know what they're doing out on the road. I don't know at all. If those trees were interfering with being able to build up the road or work the road and it's in the township road right of way, uh, then you have to look at that portion too. And I don't know whether that was the case or not, but if it was, I know we've had to do the same thing out there at, at Salt Creek Township sometimes.
It was the case, but I mean, it, it's the case all over for North Township. I mean, it, it, it's everywhere. There, there you go.
I just, if it's a case where they were wanting to build up the road, then, you know, they had to do something because your grader is going to get hammered.
It was, it was safety issue for, for the intersection.
Guys, I didn't comment. Couple little things I want to comment on. Ron and I get a lot of complaints on fire and fire permitting. Well, I was the complainant yesterday. And, uh, it turns out there was a misunderstanding. When these first permitting deals came out, we were under the understanding that you got a single permit and all properties under were, were under that permit. It turns out the way it is actually done is every property listed has its own permit number. So when I call in a burn, I've got to have the permit, permit number for that particular location. And that's where our problem was. We had one permit number. And when it renewed, they sent it back out and multiple permit numbers. And we had no way to tie this permit number with that particular property. Tried to get online to, and this wasn't old Don, has problems there. This was the kids that can get it done. But tried to get online and get, get this thing figured out. And as it turned out, we couldn't get online. So I happened to have Travis's number, so I called him. He had a little bit of difficulty getting online, but when he did, he saw the problem, figured it out and helped us out. So what I'm saying to people is this, this thing, part of the problem could be that in getting these permits and, and stuff, could just be the computer program being different than we had all thought it was. And so what I'm saying is, is when we got it all squared away and Travis informed me, Commissioner, your group made the, made the rule, we're following. If you got a problem, maybe you ought to talk to your fellow commissioners. Well, now that I know what the problem was, I just want the public to know that it may not be exactly the way you thought. And, uh, wanted to make that clear. But make your phone call, don't, and, and probably check back before you need to do the burn. Don't think that everything's just in line because you thought it was. So, uh, there, I just wanted to make people aware of that. with that, I had a thing or two I wanted to speak on, but I'm, I, that was the most important right now so that this is a burn time and people need to, to know that. Check it out a little bit before you actually need it. And with that, if there's no more comments, we'll give it up, adjourn the meeting. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Hang around for signatures, guys. The, the gals over there appreciate the signatures.